Good evening. Welcome to the regularly scheduled meeting of the City of Kettering Planning Commission for Monday, September 16th, 2024. I would like to take this opportunity to thank the Miami Valley Cable Council for televising and taping tonight's meeting for rebroadcast on Channel 6 and streaming live over the Internet at mvcc.net. It will also be recorded and available for later viewing on mvcc.net. Since this meeting is both audio and videotaped to form a complete record for possible appeal to City Council and/or the courts, it is important that anyone who wishes to address the commission will need to come to the lectern, to speak into the microphone, and give their name and address for the record. The Planning Commission is a volunteer independent body appointed by council whose mission is to hear all bodies involved and subsequently make a motion to approve, deny, continue, or recommend the application. All action by the commission can be appealed to the City Council. This time, I'd like to introduce members of the Planning Commission. On my far left, Ken Lackey, our Assistant Secretary; Carol Fisher, Secretary; I'm Don Rethman, the Chair; on my right is Troy Erbus, Vice Chair; and on his right is Ray Waskey, Commissioner. Member of staff present this evening is Ryan Hamsey, City Planner. First item on the agenda this evening is the approval of the minutes from August 5th, 2024. Do we have any comments on the minutes as presented here this evening?
No.
Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve?
No move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Hamsey?
All right. Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Lackey?
Yes.
Mr. Waskey?
Yes.
Mr. Erbus?
Yes.
And Mr. Rethman?
Yes. Item number two on the agenda this evening is new business. It is zoning code amendment relating to the requirement for amending pattern district designation. It is PC-24-012. This is a public hearing. Mr. Hamsey?
Thank you, Chairman. Good evening. I will be toggling a little bit between the presentation and the zoning code during the presentation this evening, since it was requested that I give a quick overview of pattern districts, and that is a very good idea. Since it's something that I deal with every day at work, it's not something that most other people have to experience on a daily basis. So, this zoning district amendment amends two chapters, recommends to amend two chapters of the zoning code. The first is Chapter 1153, which is our Procedures and Enforcement Chapter. In this chapter, this chapter includes the parameters and criteria that we review, both the Planning Commission and City Council review when determining how to vote and recommend in the cases of zoning code amendments or pattern district changes, or zoning district changes. And the changes are really geared toward creating some criteria and modifying some criteria that deal with pattern district amendments, and I'll explain why a little later in the presentation. As a part of that, while we were drafting this amendment, we realized we needed to add a couple of definitions to Chapter 1159, and I will get into those definitions a little bit later. So, to review what pattern districts are and how they work, in 2015, when Kettering re-adopted a new zoning code, the biggest change that was adopted as a part of that was it divided the city into different pattern districts. On the screen now is the zoning district map, and what that amendment did when the zoning code was re-adopted, the zoning districts were retained, and those are on the screen now, except what those districts regulated changed. So, under today's code, zoning districts regulate what uses are permitted, minimum lot size and minimum frontage requirements, and signage, and that's really it. Most other things are like design, setbacks, architectural requirements, permitted parking locations, and things of that nature are regulated by the pattern district designation. And the pattern districts are, when the zoning code was drafted, the staff at the time went through the city and looked at how everything was built, how big the setbacks were, what the kind of typical layout of each neighborhood was, and crafted different pattern districts depending on the built environment of that area. Because at the time and today, Kettering is a mostly built-out community, so this was really an attempt to add some form-based code regulations to the zoning code. Most of the city is, falls within the residential pattern districts. That includes estate, which is the basically, mostly single-family residential on big lots. They have pretty big setbacks, big minimum lot sizes. That's mostly in the blue areas on the screen now. The neighborhood pattern district is what most of the city is, falls into, and these are kind of your standard suburban, 8,000 square foot, 6,000 square foot lots, 60-foot frontage, 16 or so feet between each house on the side, 25-foot front yard setback, kind of the standard built environment of the city. The village pattern district, which, these are really the same idea as neighborhood, except the lots tend to be narrower. These are your older neighborhoods built in the 20s and 30s, and really pre-World War II neighborhoods for the most part. So, the houses are a little closer together, the lots are a little bit smaller. Village Heights is one of the more unique pattern districts. There's only a few areas that fall within that pattern district, and these are really high-density residential where the buildings are pretty tall. So, that condo development over, off of Shotts, that's in one of the Village Heights pattern districts. Very tall, it didn't fit within any of the other pattern districts we had, so that pattern district designation was created specifically for a few developments. Another one is One Lincoln Park, right across Lincoln Park from the Government Center. And then you get to the more office and retail development pattern districts. These are your more standard commercial and office areas. Suburban and suburban service pattern district, these are mostly office and business uses that don't add a lot to the, that don't really project activity toward the street. So, you might have a commercial building without a lot of windows on it, that fall within those pattern districts. Suburban center, these are more, this is more, these are more developments that have a lot of glass, a lot of storefronts, but they're built in a more suburban style, so far, a little further from the street, parking out front, more automobile-oriented. And then some pattern districts were created for, that tend to be more industrial uses. The industry pattern district is really just the Tenneco property. That's kind of your standard, big manufacturing facility. Light industrial is similar, except the lots tend to be a little bit, a lot smaller. The buildings are a lot smaller, but more standard. You don't have a lot of glass. You might have more standard industrial buildings. Suburban business is similar to light industrial, except you have a higher architectural design requirement, so that's really like Miami Valley Research Park, Kettering Business Park, and some of the areas behind, this is, this is, right here is the intersection of Woodman and Dorothy, kind of those industrial, that industrial area kind of behind Kettering Town Center. Those fall within the suburban business pattern district as well. And then finally, the pattern districts that really are the reason, that are the main subject of one of the amendments tonight are the Neighborhood Center and Town Center pattern district. These are the smallest, other than Village Heights, these make up the smallest amount of land area in the city. And these are the areas that, they're commercial areas that tend to be walkable, well-connected to the surrounding residential areas. These are the areas where when the pattern district map was adopted, the desire of council and the Planning Commission at the time was to have these areas become, remain and further be developed as walkable, non-auto-oriented development areas. So, you have Town and Country is the Town Center. This bigger area here is the intersection of Strup and Marshall. It's, it's commercial, but it has a lot of neighborhoods around it, connected by sidewalks. Same with the commercial areas kind of on the east side of the Wiles Creek neighborhood. This is the commercial area around Greenmont Village and Richmond Heights, so you have pretty dense neighborhoods connected to those areas with sidewalks. And one of the amendments tonight is to create clearer standards on when people apply for pattern district amendments, particularly if someone wants to change one of these pattern district designations to a different one, what criteria are we going to review to determine if we want to recommend approval of that or not? Because right now, the zoning code, and before I get to that, just as a few examples, is it showing up on the screen?
Yes.
Probably not very legible. Let me zoom in a little bit. This is the, just one example, the suburban pattern district. At the beginning of every pattern district section in the zoning code, there's kind of, there's a description about the kind of uses that are typically there. So, suburban, the suburban pattern district provides primarily medium and low-density office and technology-related uses in a medium and low-rise structures within a park-like or campus setting. This district is principally comprised of medium and large-size lots occupied by a single building surrounded by landscaping. So, the standard suburban development pattern that you would have, the required setbacks come from the pattern districts, kind of standard front yard, side yard, rear yard setback requirements. Building height comes from the pattern districts, and that's, those are the main things regulated by each pattern district, at least when it comes to the general pattern district section. And let me go to one of the residential ones. So, neighborhood, neighborhoods primarily built between the 19, between 1940 and 1980, primarily medium-density residential uses in low-rise structures within a, within a traditional neighborhood setting. So, when you go through this section a little further, you have the minimum setback requirements, front yard 25, rear yard, or I'm sorry, side yard 8, street side yard 25, rear yard 30. And another thing that was done when the code was rewritten, because one problem we were having back then was we had a lot of neighborhoods that were built before zoning was even really a thing, and the side yard, side yards would be like four feet, and like huge, huge parts of the city were non-conforming for no reason other than they were built before the zoning districts were in place. So, we included this section here. If the existing side yard is less than eight feet, then the existing setbacks will be the minimum, and that's helped quite a bit for different additions, and things like that, when people want to add on to their house, and before they were non-conforming and couldn't do it, and now they can. And then, let me go to one more pattern district. So, I had mentioned Neighborhood Center. These are the, basically what I said before, the Neighborhood Center pattern district provides adjacent neighborhoods with primarily retail uses and services along with concentrated residential uses in single and multi-unit, or multi-story structures built around major and secondary intersections. This district is pedestrian-oriented and walkable with an emphasis on connections to the adjacent neighborhood, but also served by passenger vehicles, public transportation, and active modes of transportation. The Neighborhood Center Development Pattern District enhances nearby residents' quality of life by providing neighborhood-oriented services, retail, and other uses within walking So, when the zoning code, when the new zoning code was adopted, this was really one of the major changes that was made to the code, the creation of the pattern districts. And in Section 1153.12, which is the section of the code where we lay out the criteria for when people apply to modify, modify the text of the zoning code, or modify a zoning district, or modify a pattern district, while we were reviewing the zoning code, we realized that we didn't really have a lot of strict standards, or clear standards, when it came to the Neighborhood and Town Center pattern districts. And there was also another issue that I'll get to in a second, dealing with if someone has a, a non-residential use in the Neighborhood Pattern District, if you want to change it to something like a, like a school, or a church, or something like that, if you wanted to change it to another pattern district, you couldn't do it unless you were contiguous with the pattern district that you wanted to change it to, which doesn't make a lot of sense, because if you want to change a neighborhood pattern district to like suburban, the suburban pattern district has stricter architectural standards. So, if you wanted to make that change, there's probably a reason that you want to do it that's, the zoning code doesn't really encompass today, and we want to make sure that that, that people are able to do that in the future. So, right now, we dealt with these standards when we got the application to amend the zoning district up on West Dorothy, the corner of West Dorothy and Dixie. There's several criteria that the planning, that staff and the Planning Commission have to review when determining how to recommend, what kind of recommendation to send to, to send to City Council. And one, one of them, letter A here, is, is remaining in place. It's pretty critical, and that's that the proposed amendment is consistent with the City of Kettering's comprehensive plan and with the intent of the zoning code, or such consistency is being sought concurrently. So, other than that section, right now, the only other section of this part of the code that deals with pattern district changes is highlighted, that's number three right there on the top of the screen, and that's that no reclassification of land from a Village Heights, Village, Neighborhood, or Estate Pattern District to, and I'm not going to read all of those, basically a non-residential pattern district shall be recommended by the Planning Commission unless such proposed reclassification site is contiguous to land in the proposed district classification. Now, we talked about this internally, and we think that those were meant, those were supposed to be flipped the other way, where, because the Village Heights, Village, Neighborhood, and Estate pattern districts have less strict architectural standards than the other pattern district, so we think it was supposed to be reversed the other way. And initially, we were just going to flip them the other way, but we determined, well, in addition to doing that, we wanted to include some criteria for if you want to change the Town Center and Neighborhood Center pattern district to something else. So, those are the main changes that we have on the agenda this evening, and included in the staff report is a redlined version of the zoning code. I'll go to that right now. The first is on the top of the screen now. This is that, this section was highlighted at the top of the last page we were looking at, and that is that we want to amend this section to read, "No reclassification of land from a suburban, suburban center, suburban service, suburban, suburban business, industrial, or light industrial pattern district to a Village Heights, Village, Neighborhood, or Estate pattern district shall be recommended by the Planning Commission unless, A, the current or most recent use of the property in question is or was single or two-unit residential," and this is mainly to prevent people from taking a commercial property and trying to lower the architectural requirements by changing one of these pattern districts. And then, letter B, which is the same as what we had before, "Such proposed reclassification site is contiguous to land in the proposed district classification." The next section we wanted to add deals with the Town Center and Neighborhood Center pattern districts, and this is where the new definitions come into play. We want to make sure that if, if someone is attempting to change these pattern districts to something else, it's not being done in a way that would take away from the walkability, the current walkability or future walkability of that area, because when the pattern district map was adopted, it was done very intentionally for certain areas of town to retain their walkability and not become destinations for heavy auto-oriented uses. Let's read it real quick, and that is that, do I need to zoom, should I zoom in a little further? Is that legible? Okay. That is, "No reclassification of land from a Town Center or Neighborhood Center pattern district to any other pattern district shall be recommended by the Planning Commission unless, A, such a property is located outside of a commercial node," and we're proposing a definition for commercial node. Letter B, "The subject property is associated with a non-commercial use or non-commercial uses." Excuse me. Letter C, "The reclassification would maintain or improve walkability compared to the current pattern district designation." And B, "The reclassification would result in an equally conforming or more conforming condition when compared to the current pattern district designation, including but not limited to setbacks, vehicular circulation, and parking conditions." And one big benefit of being in the Neighborhood Center or Town Center pattern districts is in the Neighborhood Center pattern district, for a commercial use, you automatically reduce the number of parking spaces by 25% that are required. In Town Center, it's 40, it's 40%. So, there's a lot, and then the setbacks are much lower, especially from the front. There's actually a maximum setback requirement from the front lot line of between zero and 15 feet. So, there's a lot of benefit to being in that pattern district in terms of those areas of the code. So, in addition to that change, we wanted to add a couple definitions to Chapter 1159, and the first definition changes commercial node, and the second is walkability. And the commercial, the proposed commercial node definition is, is areas where commercial activity is concentrated, often located at or near the intersection of high-traffic roadways, and take access from such roadways. And then, walkability, this is a little more complicated, but the definition of walkability that we're proposing is, "A measure of the quality of the built natural and social environment for, for, for walking and other human-powered modes of transportation. Walkability is evaluated according to the following criteria. Number one, the degree to which amenities and infrastructure that support and ease such activities are provided. Example, amenities and infrastructure approved but are not limited to sidewalks, walking paths, bike lanes, sharrows, and other biking signage, benches, street trees, and other streetscape elements, and buildings close to the street. Number two, the degree to which infrastructure and programming that support and promote the safety of such activities are provided. Examples of such infrastructure and programming include, but are not limited to, crosswalks, separated bike lanes, signage, and pedestrian-oriented design. And letter three, the degree to which the surrounding area is comprised of a density of destinations, and that's defined by the number of households and non-residential uses within a 10-minute walk." And those are the proposed, go back to this PowerPoint here. I mean, I meant to include in my, in my talk that all requests to amend pattern district designations would remain subject to the existing, existing requirements, such as the requirement that the request be consistent with the comprehensive plan and any other adopted plans or policies. So, I kind of already went over those definitions. And staff does have a recommendation, but before I get to that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Hamsey?
I do. Maybe, maybe I'm just not understanding pattern districts very well. I mean, when we go back, it says no reclassification of land, and it used to be, it used to be basically commercial to residential, right? That it, that it wouldn't be allowed? It wouldn't be allowed, right. It was, it was, it was the residential to commercial? Residential to commercial, okay. So, we're switching that. And I can, let me open. So, does this, I mean, this affect what the land used to be? I mean, I guess my thought is that, that would be saying then that you couldn't go into a residential piece of property and make it convert to commercial unless it was contiguous with another commercial property, right? Well, the pattern districts don't regulate what uses you're allowed to have. Okay. You couldn't, and this doesn't come up very often. I probably missed this, but maybe I didn't understand. Yeah, well, in, in, in the nine odd years that the zoning code has been in effect, I'm not aware of this section ever causing an issue with someone trying to modify a pattern district, but this would not affect whether or not you can change a residential zoning district to a non-residential zoning district. It's more, it's, it's more meant to ensure that if someone has like a piece of land that is like an old, like an old school, or an old church, that might have a, it might be in the Neighborhood Pattern District, and someone might want to change that pattern district. Today, they wouldn't be able to, even though by changing it, the standards would get, the standards would get stricter in most regards from a standpoint of architecture. But if, if someone had a Neighborhood Pattern District property and they wanted to change it to suburban, it wouldn't change what uses they could put on that property. Okay. Because those are regulated by the zoning districts. And I know it's, I know it's extremely confusing, because when I first started here, it took me a little bit to learn. So, let me go back here. So, this is the zoning map. So, like, all this yellow area is zoned residential, where you could only have residential uses, and maybe like a church or a school. This is where the permitted uses are regulated. The pattern districts only regulate design, but like resident, like the Neighborhood Pattern District has much lower design standards than like the suburban pattern district, because if someone's house is not going to be held to as high of like a building material standard as McDonald's. But the, the use, the ability to, to put a certain use on a property wouldn't change. Okay. I mean, I honestly don't think this would come up very often. If someone wanted to, I'm trying to think. If someone wanted to change the use of a, of a property that's zoned residential today, changing the pattern district wouldn't let them do that. It would just, they would be subject to different design standards, but they wouldn't be subject to different use standards. Okay. That helps a bit. I mean, this is not something that'll, it's not like we have a, a big 50 applications waiting to come in, that are going to flood the, but, good question, because I'm glad you asked it, because I figured there'd be some questions about that.
Anything else, Ken?
At least not yet.
Okay. Carol, you said you didn't have anything?
But one other thing that, sorry, I could show you right now. This is the section of our code for, like, if, if someone comes in and wants to rezone a residential zoning district to a non-residential one, this is the section that we have that kind of stops the spot, I mean, our comprehensive plan stops spot zoning from happening to begin with, but this section, "No rezoning of land from a residential zoning classification to any non-residential zoning classification shall be recommended by the Planning Commission unless such proposed rezoning site is one acre in size, or a complete block face, or it's contiguous with that same zoning district." This isn't changing. That was, that stays exactly the same.
Troy?
Yeah, I think, I think Ken's question kind of answered, I just want to be more specific. I think about spot zoning. So, the change in the pattern district doesn't impact the ability to prevent spot zoning from happening? Is that correct?
Yeah, I mean, because, I mean, it, it doesn't really impact the zoning district. So, if some, I mean, being able to change the pattern district wouldn't, I'm trying, I wish I had an example of someone trying to change a pattern district recently, but it doesn't.
That's what I'm trying to think. Give me an example, I'll try to illustrate that a little bit better here.
It, it doesn't come up that often. I'm not aware of the last time someone changed, tried to change a pattern district, but if someone were to come in wanting to swap a pattern district out for something else, I might, it would probably be a part of a rezoning as well.
Okay.
If it's a, if it's a, if it's a residential area to begin with.
That's what I'm mainly thinking.
They'd probably be trying to rezone it at the same time, but there's one other example I can think of. It hasn't come in yet, but there were a couple, there were some developments that were approved as planned unit developments that no longer exist back in the day, or EDOs, and as a part of that economic development overlay, the setbacks, the front yard setbacks were smaller, and they were built that way. And when the pattern district map was created, those areas that are economic development overlays have pattern districts on top of them, but the EDO rules.
Okay.
There's one example I can think of where there's some townhouses that got built within 15 feet of the front property line, in accordance with the approved plan. If they were to want to get rid of that EDO, the pattern district underneath them would make those houses non-conforming with the setback, and they would probably want to go into like the suburban service pattern district, which has a smaller front yard setback, but the use would stay the same. They would just be able to be closer to the front property line. They would, they'd actually be under stricter architectural requirements, but that would also be a part of a rezoning. So, I can't really think of an instance where someone will want to change one of these.
one of these pattern districts to a, without it being, without it being a part of a rezoning.
Yes, like for, for example, what I thought about as well is the research park. You know, that was set up, I think, as industrial? And they're looking to maybe convert that into some type of residential?
Yeah, that, they wouldn't, they don't need to change the pattern district to do that because we have a section of our zoning code I can show you. That's a really good question. The research park falls within the business park zoning district. And if you go. Oh wait, whoops. Go to our permitted use table. So the way our zoning district is, or our zoning code is laid out for the permitted uses, we have this table and each use group has, in this case, residential. The research park is in the business park zoning district. And multi-unit apartments, thirteen-plus units is a conditional use in that zoning district. There's some standards they're subject to. Right here, if you're going to do, and these are some of our use-specific standards. These are separate from our pattern districts. But if you're going to do an apartment development in the business park zoning district, it has to be at least ten acres in size and you need to have at least two hundred dwelling units is the minimum. And then some basic design standards here. So that particular project you're talking about, there's some concept plans out there and they're creating that plan underneath the current pattern district designation, which is suburban business. They're not proposing to change that pattern district. And even if they were, it wouldn't be consistent with our comprehensive plan. Let me see. So they fall within the suburban business pattern district. So even if they were trying to change that pattern district today, the way the code's written today, there's, other than being consistent with the comprehensive plan, there's no requirement. Because right now, the only, the only specific section we have deals with not being able to reclassify from one of the residential districts to one of the non-residential districts. That's the only, so if they wanted to change that, they could apply. Wouldn't have the support of staff, but there's no criteria other than the one that I mentioned earlier in my presentation, which is right here, the proposed amendment is consistent with the comprehensive plan and the zoning code. So this amendment would actually, if they were to want to come in and try to change it to like a neighborhood or a less strict pattern district, they wouldn't be able to because the most recent use of the property is not residential. It's agricultural and it's not contiguous to that pattern district. So they wouldn't be able to do it. But yeah, that, again, I know it's really, it's really confusing, but the pattern districts really only regulate design. So I can show you one more, one more thing that probably drives, other than setbacks, the big thing the pattern districts regulate is architecture. And if you go to this chapter of the zoning code, there's a table by pattern district. So you see the residential E, neighborhood, V, village heights up here. A lot of the design standards aren't applicable to those pattern districts because they're, they're typically just single-family houses. But you'll, you notice the little one next to each one of these letters down here. Non-residential uses within these pattern districts shall follow the architectural requirements of the suburban service pattern district. So the zoning code is really airtight for the most part on people trying to downgrade. Hey, Ray? Sorry, I just, I thought you were, I thought you were asking a question. Okay. But if you look at the non-residential pattern districts, there's some standards that some people, like minimum transparency is a big one. Certain, certain develop, developments wouldn't want to be subject to that and they might try to change the pattern district, but they haven't yet that I'm aware of.
Okay. Ray, answer my question, thank you.
Okay, Ray, any questions? All right, question regarding charros and the walkability definition. What's a charros?
A charo?
Yeah.
If you've ever been, I'm trying to think, have you, have you gone to Gentilly Park? Have you driven?
Not been there yet. I was on commission when we approved it forever ago.
If you've ever driven, I'm trying to think of where we have some in Kettering. But if you've ever driven in a town where there's like a, let me just look it up. It's a, it's a stamp on the road that basically designates where, it's supposed to designate where cyclists are supposed to ride. There we go. These are charros.
Got it.
And what these are, my understanding is what the, I'm not an expert on them, but what these are usually for, it's, it's not just to say that, it's not just a share the road symbol, but normally they'll be set back from, if there's street parking, they'll be set back far enough so that if someone were to swing the door open, and some, and a cyclist is riding along the charros, that the person's door won't hit them. They're usually set back. In addition to saying that, hey, cyclists have every right to use the, use the road as well, they also help cyclists kind of stay in the right location to prevent from being, what's called being doored.
Cool, all right.
So that's what, that's what a charo is.
Thank you. All right, any other questions by commissioners? All right, this is a public hearing. At this point in time, if there's anyone out in the audience who wishes to address the commission regarding this, either for or against, now's your opportunity. Seeing as that no one is wishing to come forward, staff recommendation?
Thank you, Chairman. The recommendation is that the applicant's request for a recommendation to city council for approval of the zoning code text amendments to the city of Kettering zoning code be approved.
All right, any commission comments regarding the recommendation? All right, this is a public hearing. Do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
Ms., Mr. Urbis?
Yes.
Mr. Lackey?
Yeah.
Mr. Waskey?
Yes.
And Mr. Rethman?
Yes. All right, I believe Ms. Fisher, you have a motion for us.
I have a motion for a zoning code update, a zoning code text amendment, whereas an application has been received from Tom Robillard, Director of Planning and Development, City of Kettering, Ohio, requesting approval of zoning code text amendments to amend selected portions of the City of Kettering zoning code. And whereas the planning commission has reviewed the facts surrounding this request, including an oral and written report with, by city staff, which is incorporated herein and held a hearing on September sixteenth, twenty twenty-four. And whereas this request constitutes approval of a recommendation to city, Kettering city council to amend selected portions of the City of Kettering zoning code as presented by staff within their staff report and oral presentation. And whereas the planning commission adopts the findings of fact presented by staff in their staff report, which is incorporated into this motion. I move that the applicant's request for a recommendation to city council for approval of zoning code text amendments to the City of Kettering zoning code be approved.
Do I, do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the proposed motion? Call the roll, please.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Waskey?
Yes.
Mr. Urbis?
Yes.
Mr. Lackey?
Yes.
And Mr. Rethman?
Yes. All right, item number three on the agenda is audience participation for items not on the agenda. Is there anyone out in the audience who wishes to address the commission? Seeing none, moving on. Other business, signing up lats?
We have none.
Communications and reports?
Yeah, I have a couple quick items I wanted to update everyone on. When the, when, when it cools off, we're probably going to be bringing some zoning code amendments forward that we, we had talked about, some of the, some of the smaller ones at prior meetings, like the front porch regulations, driveway regulations, and another, some other amendments that we had been working on that we had kind of touched on as a part of the last big zoning code amendment, dealt with some of our screening requirements between residential and non-residential uses, particularly the masonry wall requirement that we have for, we have that for a lot of uses and it's, it's fine for the most part, but since that was written, there's some other much cheaper, more affordable ways to accomplish the same goal, particularly for, we have uses that don't necessarily generate, generate a lot of traffic. They might, back in the day, they may have been really loud and obtrusive, but they're just not anymore. We want to introduce a little bit more flexibility to allow people to use, not necess, we don't want to reduce the buffer yard requirement between residential and non-residential uses, but we want to give people other options than building a six-foot masonry wall. Because another problem we've run into for properties that haven't redeveloped recently, they've had the same use, they operate successfully, they've gotten really successful, want to build an addition. And they, it triggers compliance requirements and that's fine because we get people to come as close to compliance as they can. But in some instances, the buffer yard is really just like a really thick natural area of vegetation, it's been there for decades. And if the requirement is a fence, you can dig post holes and do that relatively easily. If the requirement is a six-foot high masonry wall, you're having to cut down a lot of this stuff and it's almost a negative in terms of the existing screening. So we want to introduce some flexibility there. Another item is in our business park zoning district for multi, and this is our mainly industrial uses, but in multi-tenant buildings, we, our sign allowance is a half a square foot for every one foot of tenant space frontage, which, okay, that's fine. But it's capped at twenty square feet. And a lot of these buildings are really big and every once in a while, you'll have an industrial building that might have two tenants in it and it might be sixty thousand square feet and they're permitted two twenty-square-foot signs total. We would like to kind of still keep the standard proportional to the building, but get rid of that cap because it, it is creating some challenges for some of those older buildings. Or not necessarily older buildings, just bigger buildings that we have. And before we drafted more clear standards, we wanted to make sure that the planning, we, we don't need an answer, we wanted to make sure we're on the right track with those ideas. There's not like a, absolutely not, don't even think about it issue. Are any, any concerns?
Anybody, any concerns?
I look forward to hearing them.
Okay. We'll bring forward more detailed actual amendment drafts in a public hearing at a later date. And the comprehensive plan update is much closer to officially beginning. And I believe one of the last meetings that Tom Robillard was at mentioned how, we don't know if the planning commission will be the steering committee, but at a minimum, we will have meetings here at the planning commission throughout that process. So those will be starting pretty soon. Like we've actually, we, we sent the RFP out a while ago, got the proposals back, reviewed them, interviewed several, three different companies and were, or maybe four. Can't remember the exact number. And we'll be proceeding with that very soon.
Very good.
And that is all that I have.
All right, planning commission comments, Mr. Lackey?
I have one.
Ms. Fisher? Mr. Urbis?
I do have one. So I'm just kind of curious, Town and Country, I've been there the last couple of weekends and it's really been busy. And I know we have a bunch of property in the back there that's sitting in some green fields waiting for something to happen there. The last major addition out there, I think, was probably Chick-fil-A.
Yeah, Panera added a drive-through.
A drive-through.
Was a pretty big project.
And I know there's a remodel going on with one of the vacant spots over there now. Someone else is going to move in.
Yeah.
When you look at that and when you look at future expansion, maybe in the backside of that, how do you look at traffic patterns and just the volume in there? Because to me, it just seemed to be a little bit more of a hazard than maybe I anticipated. Especially around the lunchtime period and things like that. It's just, and there's a lot of traffic, pedestrian traffic because they park all closest to Stroop and walking across and it just, it just makes me a little concerned.
Well, I wish I had a clear answer. Out back, I have, that's, it's in the business zoning district, so it's very permissive in terms of what can be back there. It is also in the town center pattern district, so whatever they build will have to be close to the street and somewhat pedestrian-oriented. So you're talking more about like near the corner where Chick-fil-A is?
I think across the whole front, frontage area, Long Stroop, it is extremely busy. Famerians all the way down to Chick-fil-A.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's a, it's a, they're kind of a victim of their own success.
Yeah, I agree.
And in my experience, when I go there, thankfully, people are careful when they're driving.
Yeah.
I don't know of any, nothing stands out to me as being an obvious way to reduce that amount of traffic.
And I don't know if you can make them change anything, just future growth or changes of usage or different tenants that go in there, it just makes me concerned. If you get a high turnover volume in there, I'm just worried about public safety, that's all.
Yeah, I mean, I, if, if they're not changing stuff about the site, it'd be hard to force a lot of
Right, yeah.
Changes and that's just a matter of the amount of, there's several very high-traffic uses like right there.
Something just to think about with future development back there, that's all.
You're, you're talking mainly about out in the back, like how that could be. Yeah, I mean, whatever goes there, how traffic moves around, it would definitely be something that's reviewed at that time. And I, I wish I had something that was in my head, obvious, like, yeah, well, when they, when they build back here, they'll be able to do X, Y, Z and some, but nothing really stands out. I think, I think a lot of people, instead of going out onto Stroop or Far Hills, they choose to go out onto Schroier because it's just a lower-traffic road and by default, it becomes a high-traffic road for that, for that reason. That's the same reason, I think, I mean, when I go to Town and Country, I enter off Schroier. Like I always enter from that access point right there. And I.
Not looking for an answer, just something to consider down the road when something does come up for us to think about how we can manage it better. That's all.
Yeah, I think that, I think that makes a lot of sense to look at for sure.
That triggered a thought in my mind. In the same part of Town and Country, in the rear, where First Watch is located, that building just to the east, which is kind of vacant.
Yeah, Tuesday, where Tuesday morning used to be.
Where Tuesday morning used to be. Anything going on there?
If there is, I'm not aware of it.
I haven't seen any activity.
That doesn't mean they're not getting people calling about that space. I, I think Tuesday morning took the whole building.
Did they?
Did? I never went in, I, I had never gone in there before, so I don't know. My guess is it's a pretty big retail tenant space and retail is struggling right now.
Yeah.
So they might have a hard time filling it, but no one has called me, but that doesn't mean that Town and Country's owners aren't getting bombarded with calls about it.
The other favorite of mine for years has been the, the vacant strip mall down Bigger Road, south of Whip. That whole.
Oh, where?
Behind where the old Krogers used to be.
Where Marx used to be?
Marx used to be.
Yeah, Kroger, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, that shopping center is actually not very vacant. It, it has a lot of tenants in it, they're just not high-traffic tenants.
Right, right.
There's the, I think that's the one where the Lego store is.
Yep.
Yes.
And I don't even think they have a sign, like that place is very successful, like just Legos are awesome.
Wasn't there going to be a?
There's that, there's the, there's that gymnastics place there too, but there's not a lot of vacancy there, just what's there, there's not.
It's, it's filled in a lot over the last year or so.
Maybe it has, yeah.
Yeah. There for a while. There for a while, it was, it was ghost town.
It was a dead man's zone, yeah.
And the, I don't know if he's the owner or he's the manager, but the, the manager of that place is, I mean, is very responsive, like he'll call us with questions and so that, for the most part, it's pretty full, unless, unless one of the tenants left recently. But what that shopping center is missing is the high traffic
Yeah, right.
Use or to bring people to other businesses that are there.
Just curious, because I drive by there all the time and I just look and say, really looks really deserted. Maybe it's not, but it just looks that way.
Yeah, I mean, it, it does. I mean, from a standpoint of, there's not like a full parking lot by any means and now that the building to the south of there is mostly empty.
Then that's really a desert, yeah.
It adds to that. But there's going to be a Nova trampoline park going in where Marx used to be. That might be a pretty high traffic use.
A trampoline park? Really? Oh.
I haven't, I haven't been over there in a while, so I don't know how much progress they're making, but I know they got their, their permits and they've been doing some work over there.
Hmm. Okay, just curious.
Anybody else? If not, we are going to adjourn this regularly scheduled meeting of the City of Kettering Planning Commission for September sixteenth, twenty twenty four, until our next regular scheduled meeting at seven fifty-three PM.